Good afternoon. It's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Erasmo Villarreal. Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Mike Barone. Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Johnny Narváiz. Yu Xian Huang.
Here.
Larry Dovalina.
Here.
Daniela Zada Paz.
Here.
Ana Villarreal.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Thank you. You hold stand for a pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the common people of Texas. One nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite and eternal. Is there a motion to excuse the commissioners that are not present?
So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're gonna go ahead and move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Es que tenemos que decir quién está...
Aquí presente.
Este...
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion.
Oh, see, very well trained. Thank you.
Porque se le jodió el lejón.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mike Barone just arrived. Okay. Present.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're gonna go ahead and... So, we're good with that?
Yes, I second it.
So, help me here. No problem. Erasmo has more experience on this. See any comments?
No, sir. No citizens? We have no one signed up?
Did we vote on the motion? Did we vote on the motion?
Yes.
I think we did.
We did?
We voted on the motion.
I didn't see hands go up, so if you could just do it real quick, that'd be great. We're talking for the minutes. Okay.
For the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, now, we're gonna go and do the... To the item number one. A, review and consideration of the following master plans. Review the revision of the Lomas del Sur subdivision master plan. The intent is residential and commercial.
Are we gonna...
I think we needed to make this...
No, we didn't. I saw a flag. Okay. Let me go ahead and call for a vote to approve the minutes of regular meeting of June 16, 2020.
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
I don't think everybody voted.
Thank you. Help me here. So, we got citizens' comment, no problem. So, we're gonna go directly to the review and consideration of the following master plans. Okay?
We can hear.
Okay. A, review the revision of the Lomas del Sur subdivision master plan. The intent is residential and commercial. The purpose of the revision is to reconfigure parkland and lots in units 23. He's gonna do a presentation.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings, engineer, sure fee engineering company. Proposed use is residential and commercial. The zoning for this 913 lot development is R2, R1A, R1B, B1, and B3. Location view. Area view. Street view. The revision of the master plan. Comments from planning. Traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I... Well, go ahead and... Mr. Chairman, we've had some discussion with the Parks Department. Mr. Danny Wires is interested in doing a little more for the park. A donation on his part to do some work on the park. They're still negotiating that. He's gonna be negotiating that. So, what we wanted to try to do is see if we can remove the park and leisure comments in order for they can move forward. But then, they're gonna have to come back, negotiate an agreement, and then take that to council for... So, the council can accept his plan, what he would want to do. Did I explain that right, Frank?
That sounds great to me.
Because if not, then we have to stop this. Then he's gonna have to negotiate the contract, go to city council. We don't know how long that's gonna take. So, we'd rather get this process done. And then, on his own, he could go talk to the city management and the attorneys, and he could work out the deal that he would like to work out.
What? Go ahead.
Chairman Commissioner Stan Wires, for the record. We're really... We've got so many departments involved, it's getting much more complicated. We're simply... And we've worked closely with Parkland for over six months. We're dedicating more land than required. Pay the regular park fee. And we've designed this thing with everyone's input that we can utilize the detention pond, plus have hike and bike trails, and make it for a nice, very nice area for the people. All the areas, but especially District 1 and District 2. We're really not negotiating. We're probably gonna make, after the normal park process, we're gonna make a separate contribution for some improvements to kickstart it. But if that's a separate issue, we'd like to keep it separate. But move ahead on this one, so we can be on city council agenda for the 25th. But all staff members I've talked to, council members, they like the idea that the parks are natural. And so, we'd like your support on it, and we'd like to move forward.
What is the total amount of acreage that you're gonna contribute? What would you have...
I would contribute, basically, how many acres, Frank?
Twenty-four acres. Twenty-four acres in total.
And what would you normally have been required to contribute?
3.53 acres is what was required.
And so, they've taken care of paying all their fees and everything they have to do. So, that's not an issue here. They're not here to try to get around that. It's just another step to make it a bit nicer.
So, why are you waiving all of the items that are listed on the parks and leisure?
Because, once again, it...
They can comply with them, or what?
Well, they have to negotiate. So, what's gonna happen is because there's the new... The new ordinance requires them, if they're gonna make a donation or anything, they have to negotiate it and then present it to city council for acceptance. So, that part can be done separate from this. And so, that... But if we leave it part of this, then this basically gets tabled, and then we have to wait for them to take care of that issue, then come back. When this issue and what they wanna do are separate items. There's no reason to hold back this...
So, are you objecting to all of this, or what?
There's not necessarily an objection. All of this is gonna get done. It's just a matter of there being work apart... There work separately right now. There's a lot of things going on right now that are being taken care of as far as... Because there's... Part of these properties is platted, and part of it is unplatted. So, it's gonna be done through separate instrument. So, when there's documentations and deeds and warranty deeds that are gonna be done that have to have the correct language that the legal department requires. So, we're in the middle of...
So, is legal here?
Well, sir, they're not here, but as usual.
The... But I don't see why we can't leave the parks and leisure comments in there. It's just three that refers to a parkland deferment contract. When city council approves it on the 25th, we're ready to file the warranty deeds on the 26th.
That's fine.
So, only comment number three is the one that you...
Yeah, but it has the part deferment, because we're not asking for a deferment contract. On the acreage we're dead... That are being proposed right now. We already got the surveys up, the deeds ready. We just need your approval and the city council's approval on 25th.
Are you okay with the rest of them?
Yes.
You are? Okay. And that's good right there? Just if we strike... Strike the third comment? Okay.
Leave the rest? What happens is that if we delete the comments, even if they would come back, we still have to approve. Because it's a separate area. So, we don't... Even if we delete the comments, they're still buying...
He's just asking for three. The three.
But they're still... They still have to comply.
Yes, but he's... He's not asking for a parkland deferment.
No?
He's not. And it's listed there as an item, that's why he's asking to strike.
Right.
Just have one on... We're 150% above the parkland requirement. So, and it's a natural. It's a linear park with several playgrounds on good flat land. And we've got wetlands reserved there that we want to improve further with palapas and stuff. But that's in the future. Right now, we'd wanna meet our normal park requirements. And... But as Commissioner Doherty correct...
But what you're asking is for us to delete...
I am three.
Yes.
Three is incorrectly in there, because we're not asking for a parkland deferment. We're ready to do it right now. What got confused is we're making a separate contribution in the future for some improvements to kickstart the park more. We already have $300,000 that we paid in to help on some of the hike and bike trails. So, the two, just in all these months of discussion, the two items just got confused. So, we're... Three, even the Parks Department, there was a vision of a need that doesn't need to be... In there, because we're not asking for a department deferment. But we're complying with all the other park comments.
Right. We're fine with that.
I move to approve subject to the condition of striking number three.
Quarantine department in communication with staff that they're okay with it?
Yes. They've been talking to staff, city management, and the attorneys to try to...
Okay.
Second. Is that a motion, the second?
Yes.
You put me in the motion?
I did.
Okay, taking the motion.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Just strike comment number three.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right? All right. Okay, now, we're going to review of the revision of the Rolleiras Ranch master plan. Would that then be table?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a letter from the engineer asking for this item to be tabled.
Motion to table? Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, now, we're gonna go to review and consideration of the J&amp;H Commercial Park subdivision master plan. The intent is commercial. Give him the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Applicant is J&amp;H Rentals, engineer is crane engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this 10 lot development is M1, R1, and a portion outside the city limits, but within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, that is the location view. The aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Engineering, fire, and traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Edward Gosa, Crane Engineering, here on behalf of the developer. This particular master plan came to this body about 10 years ago. It started right back 2012. It lasted all the way to 2017. It got master plan approval, final plat approval on phase one, but it never got to the recording stage. So, we're coming back, starting the process over again. The intent here is to basically work with an existing development of commercial buildings and bring it to city plat standards. This area, we've already reviewed the comments that staff has provided. We agree with all comments except on the TIA. We discussed that with the traffic director. We've already have met with Tech dot. There's two existing driveways that currently serve this location. One driveway in particular serves phase one, which is a preliminary plat on tonight's agenda later on. The other driveway provides access to phase two, which will be developed through an access easement to serve the other buildings. And so, initial meetings with Tech dot has indicated that they are gonna allow there's two driveways to remain as long as we provide an access easement for phase two and do not add or propose any more driveways at this point, which we do not propose to do that. Tech dot is also currently developing an access management program along 359, where they're building medians along 359 currently. And the current phase one construction is completed right just northwest of this development in front of the Dollar General store that was recently built in that area. And we understand they'll continue to build more medians to the east to provide better access management. When that occurs, this particular location will have only right-in, let-out ability. And so, we already have met with Tech dot in that regard. So, for those issues, we talked to the traffic director, and he has... He's in agreement to us not to require a TIA for this particular master plan at this time. But we have agreed to, in the plating process, when we get to phase two, to work with his department to do a comprehensive job of good traffic circulation, traffic management, in conjunction with what Tech dot's planning to do. So, tonight, I stand before you in agreement to comments except for the removal of the TIA comment on the master plan. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? For the engineer?
Yeah, I had a question. So, currently, it's that warehouse, it's like a white warehouse currently there?
Yes, sir. There's several warehouses currently there on the property owned by the developer.
And then, the current consideration of this master plan is for continued development towards the back of the property?
Yes. The goal here is to incorporate the property, all the property that he currently owns, that he already has basically developed. We wanna incorporate that. So, our goal tonight was to get phase one, which is just a one lot plat on the preliminary side approved, and to incorporate all his other land as phase two. He's already done some public improvements when he did the first round of plating with phase one, including wastewater, water, and stormwater management, detention. All these items have already been constructed by the previous round of plating. So, we're incorporating all that into the overall master plan as we go through the process.
So, currently, you do have service as far as water and sewer? And I'm assuming off 350... Was it 359?
Yes, actually, there's service water off 359 and sewer. The developer, he actually acquired a lot within the Las Misiónes property to the west. And then, he used that lot to insert a new sewer line through a dedicated utility easement to provide sewer to this location. So, currently, he already has sewer serving phase one and with extensions in the pipe design for the rest of it.
Does Tech dot have any plans to expand 359?
In our initial meeting with them, they did not indicate they were gonna widen the right-of-way for that. All we know is that they are gonna do this median project to improve the level of service at this point.
Do you personally believe that the median is a cure-all?
No. Yeah, it just depends on the... How... What type of median is built, and how high it's built, and the type of respect that the public gives it. If they... If all those ingredients match, you know, are applied, then perhaps it could work better. But what we really need in that area are additional roadways to provide a better loop system of our traffic. And that's currently in the works through the city and the RMA. We're currently working on that as we speak.
This is gonna be a trucking operation, is that what it is?
It's a mixture of commercial and trucking, but more oil and gas type, which is really the old-school method that was in this part of the city years back. The trend that we're seeing in that area is that there's less and less of that actually occurring. We have another client further to the west who has the same operation, and he's basically clearing the land for a new urban renewal plan. And so, we see this happening less and less. But my client's goal is to legalize the property through the plating process.
And just right now, it's under lot one, block one, as far as the first phase. So, then it'll be come back and have the second phase included in it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we plan to bring phase two further down this year later to you all, to look at that. What we wanna really do here is work with the county as well. You know, this area was a colonia that was called Old Milwaukee West. And in the early 2000s, the city was and the county worked together to extend water and wastewater to the colonias. In this particular case, the water and sewer was actually in design, but it was stopped. And as a result of that stoppage, this developer decided to just pursue the plating on his own. And now, here we are in 2022. And so, what we're trying to do is to try to put the master plan in a position where perhaps we can still work with the county to do some colonia improvements to the south of this location, because there are existing single-family homes there.
Did they acquire LUEs in the process when the city was extending the water?
No. In this particular case, this property did not have the LUE requirement, because the water was installed. The colonia process didn't get that far in this location.
I was here when it was done.
And I was the engineer of record.
And there were LUEs all?
Yeah, no, I recall that. I worked... Actually, I worked with Pablo Martinez at the utility department to develop the original plan of that. And Old Milwaukee West was not part at that time of the LUE. But the EG Ranch property to the south is part of it. We were the engineers on that. And so, there's certain properties that were and were not.
Mr. Garcia, are you able to service them with water and sewer?
Yes, the water and sewer, for the record. Arturo Garcia, utilities director? Yes, we are able to serve the area.
And you have the capacity to serve?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me... Let's move ahead now. Let me up. The one that plays a comment, Mr. Garcia, was traffic safety. So, I can bring traffic safety, and I know that you have been negotiating with him. Let me just go ahead and get on record that he's okay with that, and then go ahead and put for vote.
Good afternoon, Robert, paying your traffic safety. I'm in agreement with the comments.
You agree with that? Okay. That being said, anybody has any question for Mr. Garcia or any of the engineers? Mr. Barone, everybody? Okay. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and put it for a vote. And what are the wishes of the committee?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary... To approve this subject...
Delete the...
Delete the TIA that was... That traffic agreed to. Juan, motion.
Okay.
For a second? Where is that comment?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it? Okay. Now, we're gonna move to the preliminary.
Everybody's good? Yes, sir.
Did somebody abstain? Okay. Now, we're gonna move to item 7A. That's a preliminary consideration of the plat of J&amp;H Commercial Park subdivision, phase one. The intent is commercial.
Yes, sir. The applicant is J&amp;H Rentals, engineer, crane engineering. Proposed use, commercial. The zoning for this two lot development is M1. The location view. The aerial view. The street view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. The proposed motion.
Mr. Garcia?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Edward Gosa with Crane Engineering. We do agree with staff comments. This is a one lot plat for the building to the far left-hand side, if you're facing toward the highway. The plat was also developed with easements based on existing as-built conditions. From the previous attempt to plat this property, there's been a lot of infrastructure built following city standards. So, now, the easements are now in place on the plat to make the easement much easier to manage.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? What are the wishes of the committee?
For record, you concur with the comments?
Yes, they did pick up.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna go to item 7B. Preliminary consideration of the Plata Pinnacle Industry Center, on row 1472, unit 6. The intent is light, commercial.
Yes, sir. The applicant is FM 1472 Investments, engineer, Gilpin Engineering Company. Proposed use, light, industrial. The zoning for this five lot development is M1, and a portion is unzoned, as it is currently outside of the city limits. The location view. The aerial view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Mr. Gilpin?
Good evening, commissioners. Judge Gilpin, for the record. Gilpin Engineering Company representing the applicant. And just here, answering any questions.
You concur with the comments, Mr. Gilpin? Okay. Any... Or the board members have a question for Gilpin?
This one was the one that you didn't arrive last time, right?
Yes.
That it was outside the city limits, right?
You indicated that Altrara Ruthinger Road, the environmental, was gonna be released, and Tech dot was gonna proceed with construction. Has that happened?
Not that I'm aware of. I do know that they were working on that. I think you even mentioned it.
Yeah, I'm working with them on that on another property, and it's... Continue to move along.
You know, that road is getting more dangerous by the minute.
Absolutely.
And at some point, if something doesn't give, you're gonna end up with something worse than what you're doing now.
Okay.
People don't travel the road, and they don't see what's happening out there, but I do.
Okay, that was a good comment. What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to approve, subject to comments.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to 7C. Preliminary consideration of the Plata Alexander Commercial, phase 13. The intent is commercial.
Yes, sir. The applicant is DJ Alexander Development, engineer, primary engineering. Proposed use, commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is B3. The location view. The aerial view. The street view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning, and traffic safety. Texas Department of Transportation. The proposed motion.
Who's the engineer?
Good evening, Eduardo Gutierrez, the previous engineer. We concur with the comments.
Any of the board has a question for... No?
I think under Tech dot, comments is a typo, because it says Maella to connect to US 59. Should be connected to Loop 20.
Yeah, Loop 20.
I can both comment one and two.
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three. Do we know what's gonna be built there?
On the lot?
Yes.
It's hyper-commercial, but I don't know the end user at this time. Some type of commercial use.
Do you have any concerns in traffic?
No.
No, I'm asking the traffic.
Oh, traffic.
Good evening, Robert, paying your traffic safety. And so, Bob Bullock is US 59, and it's also I-69. So, old...
I-69.
Old US 59 Saunders is now Business 59. And so, they had to bring Loop 20 in... Which is not Loop 20 anymore. It's Bob Bullock, I-69, US 59, up to interstate. They had to classify it as an interstate order to build the overpasses. So, it's a long story.
That's why they changed.
And so, yes, we're working with Tech dot and with Mitra Gutierrez on the side distance and the connection of Maella to US 59.
We need to teach you now.
We need to teach you now.
Is there a median at that location to prevent traffic from trying to cross over to the other lane?
Yes, sir. It's the only, fire, fire department has the only cut in the median to.
I'm aware of that.
For emergencies.
That's what I was gonna say. Is it the one that's right next to me?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. What are the wishes of the, of the board? Motion to approve, subject to comments? Yes. All in favor?
Yes, sir.
The hell's right here.
We can go slower if you want to. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Lot one, block one hillside crossing. The intent is residential, multifamily.
Yes, sir. The applicant is Enrique Enrosa Maria Benavides. Engineer, crane engineering. Proposed use, residential, multifamily. The zoning for this one-lot development is B four. The location view. The aerial view. The street view. The proposed plat. Comments, planning.
In front, in front.
Proposed motion.
This is next to the Sherwood Williams, right?
That's correct.
Yes, uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. Alfredo Martinez with Crane Engineering on behalf of the developer. We concur with those, those comments that were listed. The only thing we would add there is to address those floodplain-related comments. What our approach is gonna be is to, uh, go in and do a Clomer F request based off the, the proposed improvements to hopefully, uh, bring down those B F E elevations according to analysis. So that, that's just something we wanted to add on there.
One of the other items that we have, um, that we've been trying to work out with the developer on these apartments is, you know, that they're doing a detention pond and they've, uh, the engineer has worked with the city environmental to expand the, the detention pond to accept more water into their system. Uh, this, this is a floodplain area. And so the engineer did that. He has expanded it out. With that being said, their design comes up about twenty, twenty parking spaces short. They're offering to put some more trees in, in this complex. And so the issue we have is, is to create the variance for that, because of the fact that they did expand their, their detention pond to accept more water. So I bring that to the table because we really don't have a mechanism for that to, to offer a credit of some sort if they help the city's request. We really don't have anything like that. So I bring that to your all attention because that's something that we have been discussing. One of the, one of the biggest, uh, problems that I see in this development is that, uh, we're increasing the traffic in that area in accordance to what they planned to build there. And, uh, even though we're creating that, that pond there and if we're gonna be sacrificing or we're gonna be accepting shortage of parking, what that, what it does, it overflows into the street or to adjacent properties. See? We're looking at the preliminary plat, okay? So we're not looking at, uh, at the construction yet. But I would, uh, I would make it as a comment that, uh, we need to be very careful as to what we're gonna approve there because, uh, we have a lot of traffic there. So go ahead.
And I'm seeing, in, at least in this map, we only have one entrance by hillside. We have no, no other.
There's a secondary access.
Where?
It's gonna be per fire o- only.
Per fire only?
Right.
Why is it only for fire and not for?
There are, we, the south boundary line of this property, Edward Garcia for the record, the south boundary of this property is encumbered by an existing concrete line channel that provides drainage relief for the entire east side of McPherson Road, including the library and other, other developments in that area, including the McPherson Road right away. So there's not any other form of access to a public street to our south or to our east. The only form of access that we have on this project to a public street is to the north. The good news is that Fred looked at the, uh, the capacity of the Hillside Road from a traffic perspective. And Fred, why don't you touch base a little bit on that?
Right, yeah, I was, I was gonna mention that after your comment on traffic. So what I noticed is from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, there's actually been a decrease of traffic along Hillside Road, specifically right there west of that intersection with McPherson. So just to give you some numbers, in twenty eighteen, that, the overall annual average daily traffic was eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-five. In twenty twenty-one, that number was ten thousand two hundred sixty-five. So it, there's been a decrease of, of measured traffic counts on that road.
Is that due to the decline of the mall?
That, uh, that's what I, that's what I think.
The declining and COVID.
Oh, right, correct. Uh, and I also compared that to what the capacity of that street based off, um, I guess federal standards. So based off a two, um, lane road at thirty-five miles per hour, signalized, it's near the vicinity of that traffic signal. So, uh, the level of services that you can achieve are either B, C, D, or E. B being, B being the highest. So what that allows in that scenario, that type of road, that speed, those two lanes, the, to get a level of service of B, it's twelve thousand eight hundred, uh, vehicles, uh, per day would be what has you fall within that level of service. So based off these measured traffic counts, I mean, we're still getting a good level of service for that road.
So even if we add the additional traffic, as you mentioned, Commissioner, uh, we still can achieve an adequate level of service on Hillside. In addition, the deep restrictions on this property required us to provide a, a right-of-way reserve in case the city in the future wanted to expand this roadway. So this preliminary plat provides for that. And, and the site plan that was developed for this project also incorporates that property reserve. So on one side of the coin, we're, we're providing a reserve for future right-of-way potential. And on the other side, on the south side, we're dealing with an existing concrete line drainage channel and, and having to add additional detention facilities to accommodate the limitation of capacity on downstream channel to protect the water.
How many units are being proposed?
Hundred and twenty.
From what I remember, the channel was already at capacity before. I've seen it actually flood. How much of the land are you currently taking out by applying for that lomar that you're trying to establish?
Well, actually, once, once it comes to the floodplain, it's not related to that southern channel. That floodplain is coming from, um, the Sycotic Creek Channel, which is to the northwest of this area.
Or, or to the west.
North and, yeah, northwest.
I, I don't, I don't see that, the, that the, the biggest problem would be, uh, uh, Commissioner on, on the drainage. I see, we got a hundred and twenty units that are gonna be built there. So, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that we're looking about at least double the amount of vehicles. So looking at about two hundred and forty vehicles that are gonna be exiting at one particular, within time limit.
Yeah, they could say in the morning, then evenings.
Yes. They have to, see, and that, that's where.
You're talking about right.
So I would like to get traffic. The, the, uh, was there anything that you looked at that, uh, that might impact? I know we're looking at the preliminary plat, okay? So, uh, I just want, can you answer that question? We're gonna have at least two hundred and forty vehicles exiting at one particular time. Not all together, of course, but, uh, do you see a problem there on Hillside?
Robert, paying your traffic safety. No, I, I don't, I don't see a problem.
You don't see a problem?
No.
Okay.
Who sets up big compliance for the displacement of water? Who reviews that?
For the displacement of water?
Well, yeah. He's gonna pave the, the lot. He's gonna build, so the water's gonna go somewhere. It's not gonna stay there.
That's correct. That's.
So who reviews that when he says that he's gonna increase the detention? What size does the detention have to be? Who reviews it?
That, yeah, that, that's, uh, subject to the review by the engineering department. Once we, uh, once we get preliminary, we go to one-stop shop and they review the plans and the calculations and the analysis we develop.
Is the engineer here?
No, he's not.
No, no, they are.
Well, that, that will be.
Can I really, I really have a problem with.
That'll be a, excuse me, that'll be a part of the, before we need to go final plat on that, we have to go through all that process.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, members of planning and zoning. My name is Jed Brown. I'm not the applicant, but I am the developer that's working on this and, and, uh, there haven't, uh, there hadn't been a specific question that was something that really ties to the developer as much as the civil engineer. I would like to point out one thing. This is a, this is a tax credit application project. We submitted, um, uh, this is currently, this project's in first place in Region eleven, which is for, uh, everything from, uh, Eagle Pass all the way down to the tip of Brownsville. Ten, there was ten applicants. Our application's in first place. Back in November, uh, in order to receive a resolution of support from the City of Laredo, you have to actually, uh, apply to receive that support. We did that. We received the support. Here's a copy of the resolution supporting it. When we did that, we submitted to the Community Development Department and that was given to different members. I would expect all the members of council and the mayor, uh, a copy of our application, a copy of our site plan, a copy of information regarding parking, everything they needed to know about this, uh, this project in order to receive this resolution of support. So I did wanna let you know, this is something that we've been working on really pre-dating November. But we've got months into it. Uh, the actual awards for tax credits happened at the end of, uh, this month on the, the last Thursday in July. We typically don't move on plating or change of zone until we see the final awards list and that's where we are now. The owners of the property, we wouldn't wanna do something that would encumber their property without knowing that we're gonna receive an award of credit. So we're at that point now, um, and that's why we're before you on this plat. I, I can answer any questions that may not necessarily be engineering questions, but tied to the specific development we're doing.
Anybody has any questions for?
Uh, being involved in tax credits, uh, I move to approve subject to the conditions.
Second. Second.
Aye, one favor? Hi.
And may I make sure I understand, uh, the, the approval, uh, Mr. Nevada brought up the parking, the trade-off of the enlarged detention pond uh, for the twenty, uh, twenty-five parking space, I believe is the final number. I wanna make sure that that's part of the motion if, if that's okay.
Accept that variance? Is that what you're confirming? I believe we will include that in the motion.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We already voted, ordered on it? We're good? Okay, now we're moving to, um, seven E. Preliminary consideration of the plat. Of Kilam Industrial Park in nineteen. The intent is industrial?
Yes, sir. The applicant is Kilam Development Engineer, SECA Engineering. Proposed use, industrial. The zoning for this two-lot development is M one. The location view. The aerial view. The street view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. The proposed motion.
Is this in? Sorry.
Can we go back to the.
Go ahead.
To the site? He needs to.
I was gonna ask something. Is this?
No, he needs to go back.
No, he wanted to see the aerial view?
Yes.
Is it? Are there two properties in the front that are not part of your development that are independently owned by other people who are either parking trailers or they have a nationalization, uh, business? Is this where, where that's at?
Uh, this is in Kilam Industrial Park North. It's, uh, Kilam, Kilam Industrial Boulevard. Uh, the property in the north is owned by us. Vince Martinez is representative of Kilam Development. Even chairman of the commission.
Just trying to.
Yeah, let me. West of I thirty-five and Kilam Industrial Boulevard.
Could you say your name for the record?
All of the properties. All of the property is yours?
Yes. This is why he's asking. Look at this aerial, there's a gap right before the highway. So that's why he's looking. Just so you can. Here's thirty-five. This is, um, loop. And it's in this parcel right here. This is Kilam Industrial Boulevard.
You zoom in any more?
Sure.
Es el espacio donde sales. Que pusieron la conexión hacia la treinta y cinco. Adicional que, que es la calle que se puede ir.
El access road.
Como el access road de la treinta y cinco.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. No, no, she is okay.
So is this gonna be workhouses? Or what's?
It's gonna be a warehouse.
Uh, we currently don't know.
It'll be well.
Just gonna leave forward the plat. We do concur with the comments.
You do?
Yeah, we do concur with the comments and in regards to some of the, the, the V F E questions and floodplain, we are working on a clomar, lomar with, um, crane to remove the entirety of the property from the floodplain.
If you.
Within the, within the channels.
If you come onto the access road, do you have to go to Texas for approval?
If we do add access to that area, yes, we will. Um, at this point, we do not.
Your intent is not to go there and your intent is go toward the interior streets?
Uh, yes. Uh, this, this entire property is encompassed by those drainage channels. Um, so the intent right now is not to cross those channels with any access or anything at the time. Um, and also to the east side, that is the area where the overpass will cross, three-five. Um, so we probably will not be able to do any access to the east, east of that.
Cause, uh, sometimes that, uh, overpass gets hectic.
Yes. It does.
Okay. Any more questions? No? There are motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Seventy-five percent, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we got, uh, section, this consideration that's following final plats and final replats. Um, do I hear a motion to take, uh, item A, A, B, and C?
So.
Second. So move the Valina second.
Sorry.
I was presenting the last time.
Motion to approve A, A, B, and C? Together? Eight? A, B, and C?
Eight, A, B, and C, all together.
Okay.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor? Seventy-five percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're gonna go to item nine. Consideration of model subdivision compliance. Mr. Chairman, if you, if you can, uh, just, if, uh, well, I guess, don't take action, don't do anything for A. That, that was an error. That was already approved last meeting. And it, it got put on. So if you could just do, uh, nine, B, and C. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and strike nine A from the agenda because that was an error. And we're gonna take nine, B, and C together. Is there a motion to, uh? Motion to take items nine, B, and C for approval?
Not.
Only B and C?
Yeah.
B and C was, uh, right. B and C.
B and C.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve nine, B, and C.
I make a motion to approve nine, B, and C.
Second, Valina.
Seventy-five percent, aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.